Okay, it's six thirty-two and I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. Roll call. So Carol?
Carol Hoss is present.
Julie?
Julie Byers present.
And Lance McNally present. So we have a quorum with three.
Uh, Mike's on.
I'm here too. Mike Verasco present.
Who'd I miss?
Mike Verasco.
Oh, Mike. So you must be dialing in.
No, I'm on Zoom. I just don't have a camera on this computer.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mike.
No worries.
All right. So I don't have any additions or deletions unless Beth starts panicking.
Yeah. Yeah, I had sent you a note asking if you could add four point four. Did you see that in the folder? Under preliminaries?
Hold on. I'm gonna guess. Does this have to do with chickens?
Yes.
All right, so let's add four point four under chickens.
So that's under correspondence, which works. Yep. And that's the building commissioners correspondent, so they were copied on it.
Thank you, Beth. That's why I asked, so I didn't get in trouble.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. So approval of the minutes for August the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Carol, any comments?
No, I have no comments.
Julie?
No comments.
Mike?
No comments.
All right, Lance has no comment. So with that, can I have an approval to proceed? Or approval to approve? I mean, a motion to approve, I should say.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second the, to approve the minutes from, was it August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah. How do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
Lance McNally, yes. All right, so Beth, you said that the minutes for the September the thirteenth weren't available before this meeting?
Correct. And I did, I did probably should have said something under one point two for chairman's deletions, but you can address it now, so.
Okay, well, that's no problem.
Okay.
So we'll just push the September thirteenth meetings till our next meeting. All right.
Point of order?
Yes, please.
If you don't mind, Lance, when would the, the minutes of the last meetings be available?
I think Beth just about, just about had them done. Beth, could you address that, please?
I can have them done this week. And then if you want, I can, you can make a records request, but I will have unapproved minutes. So to answer, maybe to make it a little more clear, at the October eighteenth planning board meeting, the minutes will be available for the board to approve. If you want them before then, I can make the draft minutes up this week, and then you could make a records request to have those minutes, but they're not approved. It's, it's up to you.
That works for me, Beth. If, 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 if I, if you say they'll be available, thank you.
Okay, so when I do finish them, do you want me to just send you a quick notice and you can make the records request?
Nope, I can always just look at the town site.
Oh, okay, sure.
No, excuse me, Joe, I think, so Beth, correct me if I'm wrong. The minutes are not going to be made available publicly until the meeting, correct?
Until the board approves them at the next board meeting on October eighteenth, correct?
Well, Joe, do you want to look at the minutes prior to the next board meeting?
I don't, Lance. I'm just trying to maintain the record.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we, you know, I really strongly believe in transparency, so we just don't make minutes available before they're approved publicly, you know, so that there's not a misconception or what have you, if you know what I mean, if we change them.
No, and, and that's cool, and it works for me as long as they're a part of the record.
Yeah, that'll be part of the record. We have not missed our minutes.
No, cool. That's all good. Thank you.
Can I just add that the, the video was not on YouTube until, I think, yesterday, so that's available for the public right now. So the video of the September thirteenth board meeting is now on YouTube.
I can see that Joe's just waiting to, to see that video. We could get an Emmy with that, Joe.
No, I just, I, I just need everything down, you know?
It will be, Joe, don't worry. All right, all right, Beth, so three point one, Townsend master plan. Final draft. Beth, so let me turn to you, because I know you spoke to Kim.
Yeah, actually, I spoke, I did get an email, emailed Karen Clement, and as far as an update goes, they have not met since, gosh, I'm sorry, I don't remember their last meeting, but they haven't met in September. I believe there were cancellations. And then Karen Clement said that they have, they plan to meet in the near future. So I don't have a date for their next meeting, and the planning board office did not receive any updates to the final draft version one. That's, that's where we're at right now. We're waiting for that from master plan.
All right, three point two, DT LA update?
Well, the DT, the district technical local assistance grant is directly related to the master plan. We're off the timeline at this point, but that's, that was a flexible timeline. The grant does expire December thirty-first, so all of the scope has to be completed by then.
Okay. All right, Carol, update on Safe Routs?
I don't have any updates.
What?
I don't.
Okay.
I know. Wait, wait. I thought you sent something to me, Chaz. Didn't you? I thought you, you emailed me something. You must have.
I email a lot of things. I did get something from Safe Fruits and I did forward it to you, yes.
Right, and I thought you had forwarded it to Carol. I'll see if I can find it. I don't remember what it was in regards to.
I think it was upcoming functions that they were, they were planning.
Oh, Carol, are you on a distribution list or something for?
I thought she was.
I am for, I know there's a meeting coming up next month. I'm on the Massachusetts Safe Fruits list.
Good, that's important one.
Okay. All right, Beth, do you have any update on the MVP?
Not at this time.
All right, any update on the walkability and bikeability?
Yes, um, we're still expecting a draft report on the walkability, Townsend walkability study by the end of the month. That seems to still be on track, although that's closing, so, but that's the last I heard. As far as the traffic intersection study in your folders, there is a, a brief little synopsis of the route, the west, the one nineteen Canal Street intersection. So there's a brief synopsis from MRPC in there, and the draft report is still pending, so we're waiting on that, too.
Okay.
Lot of waiting.
All right.
Could I see that, that report, Beth?
Yeah, sure. I'll send you the link to the SharePoint folder.
Thanks.
All right, three point six. Alcohol, alcohol beverages license. So Beth, could you help me on that one, on three point six?
Oh, yeah.
The application or applicant?
Uh, that is a memo from the Board of Selectmen, and it's to, to the planning board, and it's regarding renewal applications for twenty-twenty-one licenses for alcoholic beverages, common vicsillers, class one, two, and three, and then entertainment. And basically, it says, "If there are any violations, expired certificates of inspections, or outstanding conditions of special permits and/or payment owed for taxes for the attached list of licensees, please inform this office as soon as possible." The attached list is for alcoholic beverages, entertainment, common vicsiller, and class one, two, and three licenses. Thank you. So I put this in here for the board members to review, you know, and if anything jumps out at you, just bring it to my attention. In the meantime, I'm working through the office files to check on each one of these licensees and make sure that they're compliant. And that the board of-
When, when is it due to the fuckman, Beth?
Uh, there, uh, I think there is no due date, but I'm assuming it must be, well, this was September sixteenth, so soon. I would give it another week, maybe.
I think we do updates in October for those.
Okay, great. So yeah, if we could get, you know, if anybody sees anything there that they want me to look further into, but I'm just systematically going through the files right now and see if there are any outstanding, you know, conditions or any special permits that they're out of compliance with. So I'm doing it for both of us.
Make sure that taxes are paid, make sure that we don't have any complaints from citizens.
Exactly, yeah. I'm thinking that, yeah, the taxes, they'll take care of that in the treasurer's office. So my job is to look at the decisions that have been issued and, you know, make sure that they're compliant with conditions and things like that.
Okay, and I'm personally not aware of any conditions on any liquor establishments that are currently outstanding or that we've issued over the last three or four years.
Good, yeah. Okay, great.
Okay. All right, it's forty-four, so so we're coming up on our appointment for the continued public hearing on Five Turnpike Road.
Hey, Lance?
Yes?
Um, I have to recuse myself. I now own property in there, so I can't be part of this conversation anymore as a planning board member. I literally just closed on Monday, so I wasn't a, I wasn't a property owner over there during the last meeting, but I now am, so I can't vote or anything like that on this issue for the planning board. Be a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you for making that, making us aware of that, Mike.
I'm just gonna mute myself and stay on the call for the rest of the stuff?
Uh, you, you don't have to mute yourself right now. I guess, Beth, my one concern is, correct me if I'm wrong, but the site plan requires a super majority?
Yeah, you need four of five members affirming, so I can look into what we do now, because you have only, you know, three members out of five participating.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can ask town council how to proceed.
Yeah, I think that this basically provides extreme motivation to get a associate planning board member that would be able to participate in this, because we can check with town council, but with only Carol, Julie, and I, if all three of us vote in the affirmative, then it's still not enough to approve the site plan.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, hold on a second. All right, so Mike has recused himself, since he's obtained ownership there. Okay, so I'd like-
Lance, Lance, I, I kind of raised my hand there.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Just like to, yeah, I'd just like to raise a point, point of order, that if you don't have that majority, that the record reflect that a number of your board members are property owners on that property, and therefore involved in the discussion.
Uh, yeah, Joe, why don't you just hold your point of order, okay?
That works.
I'd like to officially open the continuation of, hold on one second, let me get my agenda, I'm sorry. I'd like to, at six forty-seven, I would like to open the public hearing on Five Turnpike Road, site plan review, special permit. And with that, I would like to be placed on the record that Mike has recused himself, so that we have only three of the five planning board members present to preside over this. The applicant has provided us with a authorization to continue the hearing. And so therefore, and let me read this to you, in a stated nine twenty-one to the planning board, "I, the undersigned applicant owners, authorized representatives, request that the public hearing scheduled to reconvene on September the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, at six forty-five P M be continued to the following date and time based on redesign and the portions of the site and address comments. Continuation, continuation date and time, October the eighteenth at six forty-five P M." And this is authorized by Stan Dellis. So with that, I would like to close the public hearing and encourage my fellow board members to see if we can find a, I'm going to need to find an associate member to be able to move forward on this, and with that, yes, Beth?
Point of order. You, what you said was you're gonna close the public hearing. I think you meant you're going to continue the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, I was just checking to see if you were awake, Beth.
Okay, because I can't close the public hearing.
I can't close it, but I can continue it, and just, and Joe, you're happy with that, on the record, that we're only have three out of the five members, and we need four to be able to approve a special permit?
Yeah, Lance, can I make a comment?
Yes.
All right, I sent Beth a detailed analysis that shows the case that I had opened with the Massachusetts D E P and with Townsend Conservation Commission that, that showed photographic evidence of the problems.
You can't take substantive, you can't take any substantive, substantive discussion on the, on the public hearing.
No, I just want to, I just want to know if every board member received that document.
Uh, probably the answer is no, because we have to issue it when the public hearing is open.
Okay, okay.
That will clearly be presented and made part of the public record when we continue, Joe.
Yep, I get you, I get you, Lance. That's okay, and I trust Beth to do the right thing.
Yeah, well, certainly, we will always do the right thing, Joe, so don't worry about it.
Yep, I'm, I'm good then.
Okay, I just need to be fair to the applicant as well, and since they're-
I, I fully understand that.
I don't want to do that and cause reason for appeal.
Yeah, no, I fully understand that, and get it. My concern is, is that people that have an interest in the discussion aren't part of the decision-making.
Yeah, so it will be part of the public record, hopefully, in our next meeting.
Yep, I got it, brother. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, so do I have a motion to continue the hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Five Turnpike Road, site plan review, special permit to eighteen October twenty-twenty-one.
At six forty-five P M?
At six forty-five P M.
Do I have a second?
I'll second Carol's motion.
All right, thank you, Julie. Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie, how do you vote?
Julie Byers, yes.
And Lance votes yes. But you can come back, Mike.
I'm back.
So Lance, will we know what town council is gonna say before the October eighteenth meeting about the votes?
Beth, I'm sure Beth's gonna send something out.
Yeah, and it may need to be continued if you only have three members, so I, I don't, I don't think there's any other way to do this unless we have four members, you know, I, I don't know how, how you can proceed.
All right, why don't we all take the action plan to get an associate member? Can you try to do that, Carol, and Julie, and Lance will do that? And, you know, Beth, and one of the questions that I would have to town council is if we do have an associate member, which I think the process, Beth, is, is that the planning board's got to find one, and then it's got to be approved by the selectmen. And I would ask Adam, I mean, if the associate member reviews the minutes of the previous meeting, is that sufficient?
Yes. That's typically how we've done it, yeah.
Okay.
But it is a process.
I believe there is a posting on the town website right now for the vacancy.
Yep.
There has been for quite a time, quite some time.
Yeah, since Julie became a member, yep.
Lance, if I may?
Yes, Chaz, go ahead.
Okay, I am actually meeting with town council, so I can ask for a, I don't have to say the, what this is for, but I can put a, a general, what if this situation happens, and get a quick answer to, to Beth for Wednesday, okay? Just because I'm meeting with him tomorrow, and I know that I'll have extra time to ask questions.
Thank you. Maybe you want a moonlight? You want a moonlight with us again, Chaz?
Right.
Not to cause any, any issues, but could you ask him if you would be able to, in your role, be the fourth member?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Well, this is, this is kind of why I'm volunteering.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know if it would be me, but, and, and I'm speaking totally in hypothetical here, because I think that what it is, is if you don't, if, if there are members that recuse, and the majority of the members do, do vote in the affirmative, you know, I believe that it, it will carry to the next step, but again, I'm not one hundred percent, and I want to check with him.
Yeah.
What my concern is, to be very candid with you, Chaz, is what I don't want to have happen is that something is approved automatically because the planning board can't act on it, if you know what I mean.
Yes, no, I understand that, and, and that's kind of why I said, since I'm meeting with town council tomorrow, I don't have a problem asking.
Okay, because it would be great if you, as your liaison role, could participate in this.
Not really sure about that, but I, I'll check with them.
Okay, and, all right, and so we all need to, we all need to find a neighbor that we can twist their arm. All right. Sorry, Joe, that you dialed in and that, that this was anticlimactic.
No, not at, not at all, and, and I'd, I'd actually be interested in doing one of those roles, but obviously I couldn't in this case. But, uh, you know, it, it's, you know, thank you for the consideration, and I understand that there are issues that go beyond this with previous intervention with the state and other guidelines, and you need to do your due diligence, so it's a good thing. You're doing the right thing.
Okay, and really, Joe, gosh, we look forward to you joining the planning board.
Well, if I get to work with Beth, that'd be good, because she's awesome. I'll, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, before I leave, I'm gonna tell you that her communications with me and everything else is just a stamp on, on, she's great, so.
You're too kind, thank you.
Joe, I mean, the whole board's commitment is to the public, period.
Really?
Well, that, yeah, sometimes it, it's hard to find that based on past experience, but I trust you, Lance.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's the board. I mean, it's, it's a good board. It always has been since I've served.
Yeah, there's a reason I have to do my due diligence.
Yep, I understand, and every citizen is, you know, I don't expect anything less.
Yep, all right, thank you, sir, and I won't take up any more of your time or the board's, and thank you for your commitment to the town.
All right, you're welcome. All right, four point one, notices from towns and other towns. Mike, did you have an opportunity to get this ahead of time, or are you still trying to get this on your iPhone?
Still doing my iPhone, unfortunately. Only my work computer right now, still.
All right, Beth, would you be able to, again, jump in on this?
Sure. All right. There's only a few, so I'm just gonna briefly go through them. I didn't, you know, do the summary, but from the town of Groton, "Public hearing notice from the planning board. A proposed zoning bylaw cleanup and clarification." Excellent. Basically, the Groton Planning Board is gonna hold a public hearing via Zoom on Thursday, October seventh, at seven, to consider proposed amendments to the Groton zoning bylaw, chapter two eighteen. The proposed amendments will correct an internal inconsistency in section twenty-eighteen dash nine point three, multi-family use, and will update the definitions of dwelling and dwelling unit in section two eighteen dash three definitions. That's from Groton. There, the next one is also from Groton. It's a notice of decision for a special permit, and it is granted to Richard Lewis for two ninety, two ninety-six, and three oh two Old Dunstable Road, lots two, three, and four. And it doesn't say, oh, okay, it's for a shared driveway, creation of a shared driveway access for three house lots. The town of Lunenburg, a notice of decision for a stormwater permit and a site plan approval under the code of town of Lunenburg. Um, this one is for construction of four two-unit townhouse buildings located at seven eleven Mass Ave. The, and that, you, if you want to look at that, that, the papers are on file with the town of Lunenburg Town Clerk, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Any questions from any board members? All right, moving on to four point two, update on rail trail, rail trail parking lot?
Yep. You should see in your folders, the, we, the planning board received a document, photograph from Squanico Greenways indicating they had put up the for no left turn, that was required as a condition in the special permit, site plan decision. Thought I put that in your folders, didn't I? Yeah, I thought I did.
Okay.
So that's it.
All right, and then four point three, email from USGS FEMA Risk Map Projects in New England, from Chaz.
Yeah, that one came to Chaz, but we had been copied on it, or the planning board was copied on it, actually Lance was. It is the preliminary copies of the flood insurance rate maps. They're called FRS. And they can be reviewed. There's a link in the, in the text of the document, the letter. It's called, so that, that's all, you know, board members can just browse at their, at their time, whenever is best for them.
Okay, any applicability to country states on this?
Uh, no, no, this, this, it does say at the end that comments on the, on the preliminary panels, there is a comment process that you can see, you know, you can check in there, but no, this has no impact on that.
Okay, and then four point four, the chickens?
Okay.
So, you know, and I don't recall if it was in the last year or last two years, I think, Chaz, you were a board member at the time, that we had the building- I think, Chaz, you were a board member at the time, that, um, we had the building commissioner um, by way of their, um, uh, Janet appeared at a planning board meeting basically with issues of free-range chickens on someone else's property, I think it was on Cross Street or Highland Street. And, um, basically expressing concerns that our current bylaw was, um, not definitive enough, um, and at that time, the planning board basically recommended that the building commissioner submit, um, appropriate changes to the bylaw to, um, make the enforcement easier, and it sort of died, so with regards to free-range chickens on someone else's property, of course, my solution would be it's a free dinner, but, um, I would probably recommend that we, um, take the same action that we took before, which was to request the building commissioner propose changes that the, to the, to, to the existing bylaw, um, for the planning board to review. Any comments on that from Carol, Julie, or Mike?
I did read the, uh, the document that he sent in, I'm all in favor of outlawing roosters.
Let, let me, let me back up, and let me, um, have, um, I believe that, um, being a right-to-farm community, we cannot outlaw roosters.
Oh, we can't.
I don't know that for sure, Chaz, is that something you could confirm with town council since your meeting?
Well, I, I have, I have actually done some investigation in regards to this. Um, yes, we are a right-to-farm community, um, but we, we have to stop and, and look at the situation in a residential area. Um, my thoughts, uh, is that the board should really look at, um, the input from both the Board of Health and, um, the Building Department. Um, I know that when I was on the board, we basically said that we, you know, that, that, you know, we didn't wanna get into, uh, you know, a, a push, a push and pull kind of situation. However, um, with the building, uh, the building commissioner's letter, uh, he does outline some things that I think the board should consider, um, keeping the animals on your own property and not on someone else's property, I think is a good idea. Um, but I'm gonna stand firm and say that, you know, I, I believe that we are a, a farming community, we have history, deep-rooted history in farming, uh, and I really don't wanna step on anybody's toes when it comes to something like that.
Let me ask you this, I live in Timberly Park, you've got houses, you, they're basically half-acre lots. I mean, um, I'm in a different section, I have a bigger lot, but when I go walking, there are people who have roosters on a small little lot, and I'll tell you, if I was the next-door neighbor, I would be going mental with the noise.
Right, and, and again, those are-
And it's the infamy, but when you're talking about a half-acre lot and you've got houses like right on top of each other, I mean, those roosters are pretty loud, I, firstly, I'm not affected, I feel bad for those people that have to live next door. Farming to me, a farming means you have like more than a half acre of land, we, you know, you can put-
Okay, so, what do I do this? Let me separate the two issues. The first issue is confinement of, of a flock to your own property, and I think that's pretty clear that whoever has chickens, regardless if you have a half acre or two hundred acres, they need to remain in, on your own property. Um, no citizen should be allowed, or any resident, for their chickens to trespass on someone else's property. I think that's one issue, and I think that's something that, um, currently is, um, addressed with our current bylaw, um, but the building commissioner may wanna make clarifications to that bylaw, so trespassing chickens are, um, more easily enforceable. The second issue is with the noise issue, and I'm just asking Chaz that even though we're a right-to-farm community, does that provide any legal position for someone to have this chickens as livestock? I don't know legally what the ramifications are.
And, and again, uh, I, I, this specifically addresses what Carol is saying. The right-to-farm is only for the commercial, uh, what is, what is zoned as commercial. Um, the right-to-farm, it does not really entail a residential, and that's what Carol's addressing. Um, so I can, uh, I, I believe that it, it may be a discussion that, um, that you guys have with town council.
But would you be able to, in your meeting, just basically check, are there anything, I mean, because when we say commercial, I mean, we have a lot of farms that are in residential areas.
Yeah.
Even though they're not zoned commercial.
Correct.
And can you just, while you're meeting with him, Chaz, just basically say, is there anything that mass state law, um, basically, um, defines what we can and can't do as a town?
And, and I will say that my suggestion is that I do believe the building and, uh, the building commissioner is planning on talking with, uh, town council, and I strongly suggest that you guys, and, and Lance, the reason why I'm saying this is because part of the reason why I, I became selectman is that I want the boards to talk with other boards, I, you guys need to communicate cuz I believe this issue is touching upon Board of Health issues, and it's also touching upon the, um, the building commissioner.
I mean, believe it or not, Chaz, I communicate with Eric all the time.
No, I, I understand that, I'm saying all the boards, not just, not just the one.
Yeah.
I believe this is a very important, um, thing for the Board of Health as well.
Yeah, it's just that the process to talk to Adam is not smooth.
Yep, no, I get it, no, and, and I can-
You're already meeting with him, if you could just do me a favor and find out what his off-the-cup opinion is on this.
Yep.
To avoid me from having to put in a request to meet with him.
Um, that I could do, that I could do.
That, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying in the, in the broad picture, I think it would be good if, if everybody came together and, and, and was able to, to come to a decision.
Yeah, I mean, I've already talked to Beth, I just, you know, let Eric be informed that we met on this before, and we had asked the building commissioner to provide input on the change for trespassing chickens. And, um, you know, cuz if he's having issues with enforcing the bylaw, it's better that, you know, I think it's more efficient that he just tells us how he would prefer to have a change.
Right, and we've got special town meeting coming up, so we give you guys an opportunity to make those changes if you needed to.
Exactly.
Yep, okay, I hear you.
All right, anything else on the chickens?
Do we have a copy? I didn't get an email with, uh, about this at all, um, uh, do we have a copy of the current bylaw?
Yep, do you know how to use the, uh, E-code, Mike? I sent instructions a while ago.
I vaguely I do, I, I could figure it out pretty quick.
I'll send you another, you know, sort of a research guide, if you will, on how to get through the code online. It's a fantastic resource, uh, just to be able to, to navigate that, you can save, you know, save your bylaws, you can edit bylaws, so I'll, I'll, I'll send you a separate email with that, okay?
Perfect.
Uh, Mike, what I used to do is I download the PDF version from the town website. And like, just search on, um,
E-code, yeah.
Just search on chickens or flock or whatever.
Oh, no.
All right, uh, so we have two invoices, five point one and five point two, I guess I should do them separately, so, um, basically, we have an invoice for a toner cartridge cuz Beth has been doing too much printing for forty-six dollars. Um, can I have a motion from a board member to approve paying that invoice for forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents?
I'll make a motion for the board to approve the toner cartridge of forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Hi, Carol.
Uh, yes.
Can I have a second on that, or Mike?
Oh, I did, I said, I'll second it.
Okay, Carol, how do you vote?
Uh, Carol, I'll say yes.
Julie?
Julie Byers, yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosko, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. And then we have office supplies of a hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Beth, what is that, uh, at a high level?
Um, that's for file folders, um, we got labels for printing, you know, when we do mailings, so mailing labels, file folders, um, um, some line paper, yep.
I did read it, I read the-
I put the list in there, so, yeah, that was my first official office supply orders.
I think you even had pens in there.
Well, that's not bad, since we're in September for the, um, for, uh, first invoice on office supply. Carol, do I have a motion to approve an invoice to, uh, WB Mason for, um, a hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the office supplies of a hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents. WB Mason order, S one one seven five four four eight six nine.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Julie, and Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Julie Byers, yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosko, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. All right, um, so with that, um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn with our next, uh, meeting, which is a joint meeting with the towns and the housing authorities scheduled for October the fourteenth, um, and then our next planning board meeting on October the eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, and Julie, do you, uh, second that?
I'll second that.
And how do we vote, Carol?
Yes.
Julie?
Julie Byers, yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosko, yes.
And Lance McNally, yeah. Okay, thank you, everyone, and please, um, uh, get a next-door neighbor and twist their arm, okay?